This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors for Wednesday, February 24th, 2016, and asks the clerk to please call the roll and establish a quorum.
Yes, good afternoon, Supervisors Kennedy?
Here.
McLashan?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
Serna?
Here.
Peters? And you have a quorum.
Do you have a statement to read?
Yes, this meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will be repeated Sunday, February 28th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any local library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address the board may sign in electronically at the kiosk located in the back of the room.
Okay, and would everyone please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and again, to just restate what our clerk just said, if you expect to speak, or if you wish to speak, please sign in either at the kiosk in the back, or there are also paper forms, which need to be delivered to our clerk. If you are already on our sub-agenda representing a group that is going to speak, it's not necessary to sign in. And with that, we will ask the clerk to call the first item, and we will begin the staff presentation.
Yes, the first item is your Mather Field project. It's a request for a general plan amendments, amendment to the general plan transportation diagram, specific plan amendment, zoning ordinance amendment, and extension of Zinfandel Drive located within the Mather Field specific plan area in the Cardova community.
Good afternoon, members of the board, I'm LeAnn Moffett, the county planning director. I am going to go over the sub-agenda and say a few introductory remarks before we get going with the staff presentation today. The staff presentation will be given by Todd Smith, who's been the project manager here today. And again, just to look at the sub-agenda, we are going to start off with that staff presentation. We will cover the recommendations for the day. We have a couple of additional speakers. We're going to have Rick Bellows, the senior project manager with County Economic Development, Community Development Department, speaking, and also Phil Rodriguez on behalf of Mather South LLC. In the next subsection D, under Transportation and Circulation and Preserve Management, we have Dean Blank and Jeff Leatherman, but really, we don't actually have a planned presentation by either of those individuals. They are here on an as-needed basis if questions come up, but they are not necessarily going to stand up and give a formal part of the presentation. We also then have, we moved to public testimony in our planned sub-agenda, and we have queued up several of the key stakeholders groups, as Supervisor McLashan, Chair McLashan already mentioned. So we will have time on the sub-agenda for Sacramento Splash, the Mather Alliance, the California Native Plant Society to speak, and then we will move to general public testimony. And then we will have your discussion and your board actions. So with that, that concludes the introductory remarks, and I would be prepared to turn things over to Todd Smith to give the staff presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, Board, Todd Smith, Principal Planner. Real briefly, I'm going to walk through the first three slides, which are the original proposed project that was before your board back in September. So the project consists of general plan and specific plan land use designation changes, as shown on the screen there, as well as an amendment to the general plan transportation plan to realign Zinfandel Drive between Douglas Road and Kiefer Boulevard. A brief summary of the hearing back in September, there was a fair amount of public testimony in opposition to the project. We heard testimony that the vernal pools at Mather Field are highly valued, not just in the local community, but regionally. We heard that preserve management was needed and critical. We heard a strong desire from the local community to preserve the critter pool, which is one of the vernal pools that Sacramento Splash uses in its environmental education program. We heard that the pool known as the spade foot pool, which is, in the past, has been known to contain western spade foot, was also very important. We also heard that the community, for the purposes of analysis, would like to see a much more scientific approach to establishing buffers to protect those resources. The board gave us direction to collaborate with stakeholders and to work through those technical issues and come back with a revised concept plan for consideration. So that's what we've been doing for the last several months. We've been meeting with the Mather Stakeholder Group, consisting of those entities that you see on the screen. I really want to emphasize, this has been a very good collaborative process with these folks. We've been meeting roughly every two weeks, two to three weeks, for the last several months. It's been a great educational opportunity, not just for staff to hear their concerns, but for them to hear the obligations that the county has with respect to land use planning and transportation planning. It's been great to hear the finer detail that you may not have heard back in September about their concerns and how important this area is to them. We also talked a lot about the, not just the transportation and land use constraints, but how the potential land use configuration and realignment of Zinfandel Drive might affect other land use planning activities to the south of Mather. We'll cover that in a little bit. As part of our stakeholder process, we invited Regional Parks to the table. Regional Parks has been actively managing the preserve over the last several months with the Center for Natural Lands Management. This slide highlights the activities that have gone on over the last several months. I really want to give kudos to Regional Parks, Jeff Leatherman is here as needed to answer any questions, but this highlights some of the activities that have gone on. They've started patrolling more regularly. You see some summary data there of that activity. They're working to set up vehicle barriers to minimize trespassing into the preserve. They've been working with private property owners adjacent to the preserve to enable the park rangers to sight trespassers. The consensus points to date are summarized there on the slide. The first one, we heard a lot of testimony in opposition to what was proposed as a 152-acre university site at the southeast portion of the plan area. The revised plan includes an environmental education campus on a smaller scale that replaces that original university concept. The revised plan also includes preservation of those two important pools, the critter pool and the spade foot pool, and their associated watersheds. It's not just those features boundaries, it's the surrounding habitat. The plan also incorporates open space corridors that provide some connectivity and function as an amenity for future residents. We've committed to studying several alternative alignments that I'll show you graphically, alignments of Zinfandel Drive south of the golf course connecting to Kiefer Boulevard. We also had a very thorough discussion of best management practices related to erosion and sedimentation control that would be used both during construction of infrastructure and the future development, as well as what we call operational controls, things that would be in place in perpetuity to minimize stormwater quality impacts to the vernal pool preserve. As part of the wetlands permitting subcommittee, we worked to identify some potential restoration areas at Mather onsite, as well as a few avoidance areas that could be, some of which could be incorporated into the preserve. Our goal in that effort was to avoid, with respect to offsite restoration opportunities, to avoid impacting the inventory that may be available for the South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan. Both of these projects are very important to the county, and we don't want to negatively affect either one. Finally, we all agreed that the process had been going very well. We want to continue working through the technical issues with the stakeholders, and we are committed to doing so. This graphic represents the conceptual plan within the Mather South geography of Mather Field specific plan. This is south of the golf course, east of Zinfandel. This project, the Mather South Community Master Plan as we know it, is actually a subsequent project, but it was important to the stakeholder process to bring in the county's development partner, Mather South LLC, to help talk through some of these issues as it affected their future development. So this graphic shows some of those consensus points. You see those black lines, irregular lines, that represent the approximate watershed boundaries around the spade foot pool and the critter pool. Those darker green linear corridors are the open space corridors. Those would also function as amenities that I mentioned before. The environmental education campus is shown on this plan, there we go, as that tan area right where you can see the cursor on the screen, if the cursor shows up. There it is. And that is approximate to an elementary school, that's the blue color, some mixed-use commercial and a neighborhood park. So all those things work in conjunction together. You'll see on the screen that Zinfandel Drive, the alignment is obviously not set in stone at this point. This was a concept plan for discussion with the stakeholders. Some further revision or refinement of that alignment will need to be performed. We also talked about the education campus. This is a zoomed-in area of that tan in the previous slide. So what this represents in Area A, if you can see my cursor on the screen, that would be the environmental campus core area. You can see the surrounding uses, the public school to the north, the community center, the public park to the west is Zinfandel Drive, and some detention areas, a water quality basin. The critter pool is to the east over here. Thank you. Again, this is a conceptual plan. All the details need to be worked out with further discussions with the stakeholders. We also, in response to the question of greater scientific accuracy, we, the county and Mather South LLC contracted with DUDAC as their consulting firm that's been working on the South Sacramento HCP. We actually used their, what's called LiDAR GIS analysis. It's a micro watershed mapping exercise that has been used in the South Sac HCP. Since the Mather project is within the plan area for the HCP, it seemed appropriate to use that same methodology here. It provides a greater level of scientific analysis beyond the standard 250-foot buffer. That's a programmatic approach for other projects. We also asked DUDAC to perform some peer review of three vernal pool hydrologic system studies, two of which were conducted at Mather Field in the past. One was conducted to the east across Sunrise Boulevard in what's now Anatolia. And DUDAC also did some analysis of the existing geotechnical boreings, the data that has been collected for the design of the sewer alignment. County staff also met with a consultant that Sacramento Splash have been using in the past, Dr. Neil McCarthen. He specializes in ground penetrating radar. It's a technology that can be used to approximate depth of hardpan. This is an important concern, given subsurface utility construction. There's a potential for the subsurface hydrology to be interrupted, so we wanted to talk to him about potentially using his technology. So this exhibit shows that watershed analysis map that DUDAC prepared. The different colors represent different watersheds for each vernal pool, and there are six alternative alignments shown here. Dean Blank with the Department of Transportation prepared those alternative alignments for discussion with the stakeholders. There are a number of pros and cons associated with each one. We're going to go through that additional analysis as part of the revised environmental impact report. The intent here is that whatever alignment is chosen, it would set the eastern edge of the proposed preserve, so future construction would head to the east, not to the west. So that preserve would be established. Whatever alignment is chosen, again, we would incorporate wildlife crossings. We heard that the local flora and fauna are very important. Obviously, there's an ecosystem out there that's important not only to the community, but to the region, so we want to be sensitive in our design of the roadway. As I mentioned, we also identified a few avoidance areas onsite. There are a few pros and cons associated with each one of these. I'll run through them briefly. Number one, which is just to the north of Independence at Mather, that's the yellow area. The avoidance area one is actually part of a lease that the county has with the Sacramento Rugby Soccer Complex, so if that avoidance area is included, that lease would need to be revisited. Avoidance area two and three can be easily incorporated into the preserve with just a minor line adjustment. Avoidance area four, down to the southeast, that contains the spade foot pool. That area is conceptual at this point. Obviously, we've committed to preserving that pool, and that line that swings to the east represents one of the potential alignments of Zinfandel Drive. And like I said, further analysis needs to be conducted there. This is just a zoomed-in graphic showing a close-up of the critter pool and its approximate watershed boundary, and then the spade foot pool to the south. So staff's recommendation at this point, based on the consensus points to date, we are requesting that the board direct us to go back, revise the EIR based on the land uses identified in those consensus points, and to revise the EIR, including an analysis of those six alternative alignments. We will continue working with the stakeholder group, but this is just a formal recommendation to acknowledge that. Any questions of me at this point?
Any questions for Mr. Smith this time? Not just Natoli?
So, in our packet, there was one additional page, it came after, at least in our attachment, on the specific plan land use designations?
Yes.
Okay, so are you seeking, my question, are you seeking direction around that today? Is that part of the staff recommendation then, Todd?
It is. We wanted to have some discussion without obviously precluding your board's decision-making ability, but the public quasi-public designation, PQP, the light blue in the southeast corner of the plan area, that is the original location of the proposed university. With a consensus point among the stakeholders that that university no longer be located there and be replaced with the environmental education campus, that would be designated urban development area. The conversation with the stakeholders was that, given the amount of additional analysis that needs to occur to fully define the watersheds for each of the pools, it's difficult at this point to really define anything other than urban development area, which designates that the future footprint of development in there will be subject to a subsequent entitlement process, which is already ongoing through the Mather South Community Master Plan project. The second point that I want to make is that the recreation area underneath that urban development area shown on that exhibit was the original site for the Sparts complex. I believe the stakeholder group, from their perspective, that area may be incompatible with the proposed preserve, although I know there's been some discussion over the last couple of days, and we'll hear from some of those folks today. So I want to leave that one alone for now.
Okay.
I would just add that I don't think, LeAnn Moffett again, I don't think, I think we would view the UDA to potentially be compatible with contemplation of a sports facility. Because we don't know what that might be or what that footprint is, identifying it for REC versus UDA would be challenging at this point. But the real key here is trying to figure out what the urban footprint is under the UDA, and then leaving the analysis in the subsequent project to figure out what actual uses would go in that UDA footprint.
And you've certainly hit on the essence of the question, and that's why I asked it, is that with the UDA, and certainly what we've talked about over the past several months in the stakeholder group, but what's before us today that, and we'll hear from folks I trust, on some aspects, or maybe all aspects of what's been talked about, is that the decisions regarding uses and whether they're residential, or open space, or recreation-oriented, environmental science center, are those all bundled then with, beyond obviously general plan designation that would then rope off preserve area and would recognize that? Are they all bundled with this, or are they bundled with the Mather South, or is there overlap? I think, just so there's a clear understanding about that, because I know there's, you know, there's a level of detail, to your point earlier, Todd, and LeAnn briefed me the other day and talked about this, so that people would have an understanding of what was being proposed or contemplated as least part of the plan that would only come to this board for consideration, and all those kind of components. But I think it would be important to point out, you know, what is being asked of us here today, relative direction in the environmental review, and then what will be the follow-on to that. You talked about it, but is there anything more you want to kind of fill in?
Sure, I can do a little bit of that. So, we had the conversation about the surface watersheds for the vernal pool features that are intended to be preserved. The stakeholder group strongly feels that some more site-specific analysis needs to be conducted to fully define those. Therefore, we cannot fully define the alignment of the roadway of Zinfandel Drive, south of the golf course. That alignment is very important to establishing the boundaries for any development east of there. So at this point, the stakeholder group and the county and Mather South LLC agree, it's very difficult to define a footprint for, say, residential, commercial, an R&amp;D campus, sports park, whatever the case may be, east of Zinfandel until that alignment is set. So that, all that detail would come in the Mather South Community Master Plan, which is a subsequent project.
Okay, and just to that point, that application has been in, it's been under some review, but again, after we had the hearing in September and, you know, kind of redirected in what you're reporting out today as far as the work that's been a part of that over the past several months, is it contemplated that that plan would trail behind the Mather SPA? Is it somehow catching up, or is it going to be close behind? But well, certainly, obviously, it's dependent upon what we only do on the higher-level planning. So what's staff view of that right now?
So my response to that is it would trail very close behind. Mather South LLC is the county's development partner there, and they've been participating in the stakeholder process. I know they're very interested to get going on that project, but it will trail somewhat slightly behind this effort.
Okay, all right. But I just ask another question, and I'm going to get just more presentation here, but it does relate to the specific plan, and I know that we talked about this, what I'm going to address in just a moment, at the hearing in September, and it relates to a piece of property that's not on the eastern side, but more on the west, where we have the, and it was talked about in the staff report, the industrial zone land that has the surface mining overlayer designation as a part of that. And in my briefing with LeAnn earlier in the week, and certainly Todd, you've heard this, as we've talked about it at the stakeholder session- this, as we've talked about it at the stakeholder sessions, concerned that any proposal that might come forward to, you know, in the future, to mine the aggregate that's been identified under there, that, you know, that would get not only an A-level review, it obviously would have to, because any mining or current structure requires obviously a use permit and environmental document of some sort. But again, at least my view is that if we were to take that back to either an agricultural designation, or put a higher level of discretionary review, because right now, I think it's only a use permit to the commission potentially, so again, I would be looking for, and again, if you need to study that, then I want to make sure to get the proper direction, so they don't come back a few months from now and say, "Well, you should have asked them, but now we got to re-study this." And so again, and for this board ultimately to determine, you know, what we want to do with that designation. But I, for one, don't think it's very practical to consider mining that in light of all the other uses, the sensitivity of the above ground, you know, geography, but also just the practicalities of some of the issues related to the runway and so forth, so.
So my response to that, the industrial-
We're ready.
We discussed this.
The industrial designation-
We thought it might come up.
The industrial designation, for those in the audience, where you can see my cursor on the screen, that has an aggregate resource area, kind of a co-designation at the general plan level. That is required under state law. The county, local agencies are responsible to identify aggregate resource areas in the context of other land use decisions, so that boards like yourselves acknowledge that when making land use decisions. We clarified the intent of that language in the staff report. What we did not clarify, and thank you for bringing that up, future mining in that area, if it is proposed, would require a conditional use permit to be heard by the Board of Supervisors. That is codified in our zoning code. The industrial use designation there is currently, the current designation is public quasi-public, so it's an extension of the land use to the northwest. So there's really a minor change. I think it's consistent with a wide variety of land uses that either airports or economic development may be pursuing, and I can let them speak to that, but.
Well, how about the category, maybe if you didn't go as far as agriculturally designated, put it industrial reserve? Because that still would require a rezoning, it would require certainly further review of the surface uses then, and wouldn't just assume that it's industrial. And again, it may be a little more of, again, a hurdle at the time, but I think we're still years off even the above-ground, whatever those might be, you know, airports or anybody else thinking about there. And I just think from the standpoint of future boards, you know, community members, other interested parties, obviously Department of Airports, other agencies, that the level of scrutiny that you get certainly on a use permit on a mining application is one thing, but even if you put the industrial, then that basically gives a green light to uses, if it's industrial reserve, then there has to be further discussion at this level about what, you know, what uses would be. And it's not, again, not to hamper economic development or airports or anything like that. So again, I throw it out there, we don't have to decide that today, but I do think it's worth a conversation and some direction from this board, whether it's today or when you come back to us in a few months, so.
Thank you.
Okay, that's all I have to make, Madam Chair, for right now.
Okay, no other board members signed up to speak. Thank you, Mr. Smith, and then we're back to LeAnn Moffett.
Actually, I think that Todd's pretty well-covered the staff recommendations in his presentation, so maybe we can skip that part.
Okay, then we will move on to overall project-related comments. Mr. Belaz from Community Development, and then followed by Mr. Rodriguez from Mather South.
Chairman, Chairwoman McGlashan, members of the board, good afternoon. Rick Belaz from the Office of Economic Development. Previously, we brought before your board what I thought was a really good project. Through this collaborative effort, working with these stakeholders, we're now turning it into a great project. Working with these folks that reside out at Independence, it confirmed something that I already knew, that there's a great and wonderful set of people that are very passionate about their community. That goes for the other Mather stakeholders as well. They've helped us evolve some of our ideas into real project improvements. These enhancements, they're really going to go a long way into preserving not only the existing community that's out there, but they'll also ensure that any development that takes place fits seamlessly into the existing community, the existing landscape, and also the existing amenities. So I do look forward to our continued involvement and looking forward to the final product that we produce, which will be something that both the stakeholder group and the county can really be proud of. If you have any questions of me at this moment, I'd be happy to address those. If not, I'll be sitting right over here to the left, and anything that you need, we'll provide.
Any questions?
Just a comment, Madam Chair, I did want to, and I can do this at the end of the session too, but I want to thank certainly LeAnn and Todd and Rick and others that will speak today, because again, it's been a lot of hours devoted to this. And again, you know, it's not certainly all complete, but I appreciate that Rick's comments and certainly economic development had been, you know, carrying forward on a project that was given direction on, you know, 10 years ago now. And I think, as Rick elaborated, that it's evolved, and it will continue to evolve, you know, until we get to some decision points by this board at, you know, a future date, probably this year sometime. And again, I just want to thank, you know, Rick for your work and that of your colleagues and all those that have been involved, and we're going to hear from some others, but I wanted to note that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Phil Rodriguez from Mather South LLC.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Phil Rodriguez with the Lewis Group of Companies, Lewis Plan Communities representing Mather South LLC. I will say that Todd, Rick, and then Supervisor Natoli just stole most of my thunder, which was essentially, one, to thank staff for their efforts. It's been rather impressive, both LeAnn and Todd as the facilitators of the stakeholder meetings, as well as the stakeholder community, the environmental groups we've been meeting with on a regular basis. This has really been a great process, and we've enjoyed it. You know, looking back to September 16th, you know, we saw, heard a lot of comments, great public testimony, concerns that were raised by the environmental community and the neighbors. We sat in the audience, not so much being dejected, but looking for ways to integrate a new vision for the community, Mather South. And we started noodling on crayons and paper the day after, and it really was trying to integrate what is very cherished and precious out here, which is the environmental resources. The preserve, the two vernal pools that are, that have been identified, the Toad Pool and the Critter Pool, how to integrate that in a preservation component within the community, how to connect those pieces together in a trail corridor. These are all amenities that are a part of the master plan. And then, looking back, as we do in all of our master plan communities, define a theme. And usually, that theme is cultural-based or historical-based. But in this instance, we see a vision for an environmentally themed community, something that, utilizing the resources that are out there, integrating that to cause a desire for folks to want to live and reside here. Centered with that was taking a look at the university vision that we previously had, that the county wanted us to take a look at over time and recruit universities and colleges to the area. Our efforts weren't very well rewarded. There was not really a lot of interest, but there was a lot of interest with respect to cohabitation with educational users. So the idea would be to create an environmental education campus, is what Todd described in the illustration that we prepared. It include the environmental community, perhaps Sacramento Splash, others locally, Sierra Club, Ecos, that could set up shop in this environment. You could invite universities, local universities that have environmental sciences program, biology programs, vernal pool research, to create kind of an energy here, a synergy that would cause people from institutions from throughout the regions, California, perhaps the United States, to set up shop here in a campus environment. In that central environmental campus corridor, we've cited an elementary school, weaving the elementary school environment, utilizing Sacramento Splash's resources with programs that they currently have, citing that school next to that campus. Our community center that would be a part of the master plan, the residential village, that would be cited adjacent to that as well, as well as some adjacent parks. The other defined uses throughout the community, well, they haven't been defined. We're most interested at this point in defining the footprint of the community, the alignment of Zinfandel, where that school lands. That'll help us program the inner workings of Mather South. So there's a lot more planning to take place in the future, and we're looking forward to that. We're looking forward to continued stakeholder meetings with the group, which, as I mentioned earlier, have been fantastic, and we've made a lot of good friends. We usually do in this experience. But at the same time, you know, we're excited about the project. We want to start it. We'd like for the Mather Field component to get out of Mather South application components' way, so that we can get to an entitlement goal line for the project and actually build what we've conceptually presented. So I'll leave it at that. Won't take too much more of your time. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions?
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you. And thank you for your hard work on the project. Just want to note again that Dean Blank is here from our Department of Transportation, and Jeff Leatherman from our Department of Regional Parks. Should there be questions from board members for them? Mr. Natoli, did you have one now?
Yes, I did. If I could, just on the transportation and circulation, it was on the-
Mr. Blank, you're up.
And I think it's important, particularly as we come to a point of conclusion of the hearing today when we get there, but those two things, Dean, if you just take just a moment, again, I did want to ask about them, because there was a lot of focus 10 years ago on the Douglas Road Extension, and it was put on the top of the priority list. There was a lot of conversation over the course of the last year in some of the larger community meetings, and certainly in the stakeholder meetings that led up to the September hearing. And it was notable to me in the staff report that there was no discussion, you know, to speak of in there about the Douglas Road Extension. And I know the focus certainly, and thank you for your work, working with the community on the Zinfandel Extension, and, you know, obviously, we'll probably hear from folks on that today as well. But I guess I need to hear from our department as to where we are with that one. And then the second item is here, certainly the vehicular crossing, and I did see that in the staff report. I was a little taken by, not so much the negative, but, you know, that's a pretty steep mountain to climb and so forth, my words, not staff's words, as related to that. And so, again, looking at circulation, transportation, we've had a lot of focus on Zinfandel, as we should have because of the concerns. But I guess to those two, and if you want to take just a moment on behalf of the department, and if we need to direct certain things, both in the environmental review, but also in the priority of funding, capital improvement programs, Douglas Road Extension being certainly it was on the top of the list 10 years ago, we went through recession, money wasn't assimilated. But I, again, I don't want that project getting dwarfed by Zinfandel Extension and getting kind of lost in the shuffle here, recognizing we don't have money to do all the things that we want to do nor need to do, so anyway.
Yes, excuse me. Dean Blank, Department of Transportation. Yes, I'll start with the crossing over to Sunrise. That was mentioned in the staff report. It'll be something that will be analyzed through the revised EIR and environmental document. We see that as a positive thing. It would increase mobility in the area. Again, we'll look at the pros and cons of that, and we'll leave it to the board to make an appropriate decision there. We've never lost sight of the Douglas Extension. We realize how important that facility is for the community out there. And just talking with my director here yesterday about how we might be able to try to begin to jump-start that project, and whether, we recently realized that we've got, that's a project that is funded within the dev fee. And so that opens up a pathway potentially for us to begin doing some preliminary planning and getting something on the books to start a, start movement on that project. And so I think that'll be our intent, would be to look for money so we could free up, to begin the work on that, to get something started, so that we can hopefully someday realize that improvement. So it wasn't, it wasn't that we were neglecting it through this process, but it was, at this moment, it was, we were focused on the alignment of Zinfandel, because that was a critical item for this particular item here at the board here today. So again, it's not forgotten, and we understand its dire need, and we'll be actively working to try to bring that to fruition, the Douglas Extension.
Okay, because again, we're going to see, you know, CIP in a couple of weeks on another board agenda item, and it's, you know, included in the, you know, project improvement list and so forth. Also, as we look at, you know, budgeting and certainly, you know, where our dollars go, and it's good news to hear that it is in the development fee program. So I guess I would ask on that particular item, and embody this in the motion we take up today, but is that we would, you know, when this next comes back to us, that we can have an update, that certainly as we, you know, and again, I won't be shy about asking, as you all know, when we're into the other discussions about funding and so forth, but that we kind of get a track where we're beginning to do the planning and the work that would get us positioned to, again, whether it's compete for money, or to assimilate funding through either, you know, fee districts or dev, development fee, or whatever it might be. I think it's going to be important, and certainly important to the folks who live in Independence and Mather, those who, you know, use that route to get to and from, because, you know, all of us having been, you know, part of the, a lot of us, stakeholder meetings and so forth, have seen what five o'clock looks like, or, you know, and if you haven't been out in the morning, but many have, what looks like, you know, seven, eight o'clock in the morning, coming through the middle of that neighborhood. And I think we have obligation, as we look at developing and improving other areas of the Mather complex, that Douglas Road Extension stay on our track, that hopefully we'll have it delivered within the next 10 years, since we've, you know, the past 10 years have gone pretty quickly, and people are living with the consequence right now. We just want, one other thing, then, we go back to the vehicular crossing. Again, you know, in my view, holding a right-of-way for that is a critical aspect, because if you don't do that, then chances of it ever being built are slim and none. And so, again, I don't know where DOT will start from as relates certainly to the analysis. And funding, I don't think that all falls to certainly Lewis or anybody else who might be a party to the development of the Mather South property or in those environments, but I do think as we're looking at overall circulation, that having a connection between Douglas and Kiefer to Sunrise, another connection is important, and that it can improve circulation. But I think the opportunities, and as we look at some of the environmental aspects, I think allows another portal for folks to, you know, to access that, you know, assuming this comes to bear when we're done with the planning and developments aside. And so, again, we'll wait for the analysis, but I'm glad you're going to do that. But I know previous analysis kind of showed, well, you know, the traffic and this and that, but I think that we have the ability with Zinfandel, as we look at that road and making connections, and Douglas to really have a good circulation grid out there, one that serves the immediate community, but the broader community as well. And so, you know, I'll leave it at that, but.
Complete agreement with that. So that'd be something we'll be looking into.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Madam Chair.
And any questions for Mr. Leatherman at this time? Then we will move into public testimony, and we will start with three groups that are representative groups that were part of the stakeholders, that will each be given five minutes to address the board. And starting with Sacramento Splash, and I believe it's Emily Butler.
That is correct. Thank you, Chair McGlashan, members of the board. I'm Emily Butler, and I am the Executive Director of Sacramento Splash. For anyone not familiar with our programs, we are a local nonprofit based at Mather Field. The Mather Field vernal pools are our outdoor classroom. This year, nearly 3,000 students will visit Mather Field to explore, learn science, and discover their role in protecting water quality. In September, I stood before this board with some measure of despair. We were watching the vernal pool habitat that we love fade before our eyes and didn't see a plan for reversing that trend. And we frankly felt sidelined and ignored by the public process in the lead-up to the draft EIR, which was presented to you. I am pleased to say that today I stand before you in a completely different frame of mind. In Splash's opinion, the Mather stakeholder process has been an unmitigated success. With leadership from Supervisor Natoli, exceptionally competent facilitation by county planning staff, and open-minded participation by all members, we have made great progress. By necessity, I think the machine that government is built on is one of carefully crafted and replicable processes. But sometimes, the public engagement fails to imbue citizens with a sense of pride and ownership that are necessary for a project's success. I would like to applaud this board and county staff for recognizing that failure and embracing a non-traditional process that tapped the tremendous resources that were offered. a non-traditional process that tapped the tremendous resources that were offered by the community. When we come together, embrace rigorous debate, and carefully listen to one another's needs, we and the projects we work on become better. I have personally relished the opportunity to work more closely with Rick Belaz and Troy Givens from Economic Development. While our visions may never be perfectly aligned, we have a new respect and understanding for one another's needs and constraints, and I have really valued that opportunity. The stakeholder group has worked through many contentious issues successfully, but our work is not done as detailed in the staff report. We need ongoing discussion about the proposed Mather Sports Village and the appropriate seating for such a facility. I can't speak for all of the stakeholders, but based on my conversations with a number of them, we would welcome a presentation from the advocates of that project and the opportunity for detailed constructive dialogue to figure out how we can all work together. Zinfandel and the specific alignment is another outstanding issue that needs more technical work and discussion. And according to both the stakeholders' consensus and the DUDAC hydrology report, additional technical studies will be necessary in order to create detailed watershed maps for the spade foot and the critter pool, which are such critical habitat. But the great thing is that the Scientific Advisory Committee, which is a subcommittee of the stakeholders group, is actively working and stands ready to advise and support the county and its consultants with vernal pool experts of the highest caliber. Splash has already recruited a substantial group of volunteers, researchers, students who are ready to take an active role in the restoration and the protective, protection of the Mather Field Vernal Pool Preserve. We're exploring grant opportunities for trails and improvements that could be made possible by this public-private partnership so that the county would not necessarily have to foot the bill for everything. And I think that this is a, this is a unique opportunity to find additional revenue sources that don't all, don't all require funding from the county. In short, the things that are happening today are things that I would never have thought possible five months ago. I would like to offer my sincere thanks to this board and everyone who has made this possible. I could not be more proud of what we have accomplished together.
Thank you, Emily. Our next speaker is from the Mather Alliance. Sorry, not sure of the name. You can introduce yourself, please.
My name is David Dehegan and this is my wife, Joy.
Hi.
Thank you, Chair McLaughlin and members of the board. As co-founders of the Mather Alliance and as a Mather resident, we wish to publicly pay special tribute and show our appreciation to you, the County Board of Supervisors, for your commitment to excellence and public service, and most notably Supervisor Natoli. We highly value your decision in the September, in September of 2015 hearing where to continue the conversation about Mather Field's development and build a thorough, a consensus through the stakeholder collaboration process. We can say with confidence that this process really does work and we thank you. We really feel extremely fortunate that we, as an alliance of Mather neighbors and natural preservation advocates, that we were invited to join the Mather Stakeholder Group to partner with the county staff and other key stakeholders to explore the huge number of issues related to sustainable development in and around Mather's wetlands and natural resources. Although each Mather Stakeholder Group participant brings extraordinary talent and expertise to the table, we wish to highlight the sustained and sincere commitment to leadership that the county staff demonstrated during this stakeholder process. We witness an intense dedication of these public servants who personally sacrificed their personal time to frequently participate in meetings away from home and often into the late evening hours. Particularly, we wish to publicly recognize Todd Smith, your senior planner.
Amen.
Yes. For his, he, his skill and his faithful leadership of, in the Mather Stakeholder Group was, was just excellent. Todd's expertise to help our group build a consensus, and that's not an easy thing, believe me, to achieve the common goals that benefit not only the developers and the community, but also benefit Mather's voiceless wildlife to bring priceless value to our lives. Thank you, Board of Supervisors, for your dedication to support the Mather Stakeholder Group in this process. We feel we owe you a debt of gratitude. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now, a speaker from the California Native Plant Society.
Good afternoon, Chair McLaughlin and Chairs Serna Kennedy and Mr. Natoli. My name is Greg Suva and I'm the Conservation Director for the California Native Plant Society. And I'm here to, I'm here representing two people who are directly related with the process that's going on, but who weren't able to be here today. First is a CN, a California Native Plant Society or CNPS representative who's on the Science Advisory Committee and has Carol with him. You know, I was here in September advocating with others for the county to adopt a process that we see manifest today. And the takeaway for today is just a big thank you and it's a very positive and healthy process that's moving forward. And it's, it's been very nice to see the change, the evolution from where we were in September to today. And we've benefited from the talents and leadership of your staff. So thank you very much, speaking for Carol on the Science Advisory Committee. The other person I'm speaking for today is a key member of the stakeholder group, Mr. Worth, Mr. Sean Worth, who's unable to be here today, but I've been asked to read a letter that he has submitted to the, to Supervisor Natoli. And so I will do my best to articulate what he says here in the letter. Dear Supervisor Natoli, I want to take a minute to thank you for your leadership in the stakeholder process that you helped initiate. Your steadfast participation and helpful input allowed for the stakeholder group to make significant progress towards resolving some quite complicated issues, though there still remains some work to be done. The staff report prepared for the February 24th meeting accurately portrays both the progress made and the work remaining. It does not portray, however, the spirit of cooperation that has been the foundation of the stakeholder process thus far. From the veteran Sacramento planning staff to the Lewis Homes group representatives and county economic development staff, Mather Field Alliance members, Mather homeowners economic, I'm sorry, Mather Homeowners Association members, county park staff, county transportation engineering staff, the representatives from the environmental community and yourself. The process was characterized by good listening, thoughtful suggestion, and respectful dialogue. I was personally very impressed with the level of professionalism, professionalization, the acceptance and understanding that compromises needed to be made on all sides, and the apparent quality of what will likely be the natural preserve and the urban, urban development footprints at the Mather Field. I look forward to working with you further in the stakeholder process to complete the work already begun, and I wholeheartedly agree with the statement in the staff report that, quote, "The project can be a regional example of how development and conservation efforts can coexist and improve quality of life and economic viability," unquote. Sincerely, Mr. Sean Worth, Conservation Chair for Weatherload Chapter of Sierra Club. Thank you very much and good luck with the process going forward.
Thank you. So we have a group of speakers that are associated with the proposed Mather Sports Village who asked to speak first under regular public testimony. However, we only have three other people signed up to speak, so I'm going to take those three first and then we'll get to the, to the group. So we're on a three-minute time limit now and the next person signed up to speak is Lisa Infusino.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. I am a resident at Independence at Mather as well as a member of the Mather Alliance. I spoke to you last at the September board meeting advising you of the concerns I had regarding this project. For the past few months, I have participated as a member of the stakeholder group discussion regarding future development in Mather. Since September, I have seen a level of commitment from Supervisor Natoli and county staff to make this project one that we can all be proud of. County staff has given so much of their time enduring meetings which often lasted very late into the evening, also explaining the approval process and answering many, many questions. The other members of the stakeholder group have also devoted so much time and energy. As the staff report indicates, we have accomplished much through this collaborative process, but there is more work yet to be done. I really am excited about the progress we've made. I truly believe that through this collaborative process, we can minimize the adverse effects that development will have on the community and the environment. With that, I request that county staff be given direction to continue the discussion with the stakeholder group so that further progress can be made on open items for which there are many left remaining. Although a minute detail at this point, I ask that you consider retaining Eagle's Nest as a road name for the Zinfandel portion south of Douglas. Eagle's Nest truly captures the essence of the preserve and surrounding landscape. Through our collaborative efforts, we can make this a wonderful place for people to live, work, and enjoy. After a long workday or absence, I believe my future neighbors will be happy to return to their nest and feel privileged to call Mather home. I know I do. So thank you again for listening to the community and allocating resources to find solutions to the concerns we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ken Palowski.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Supervisors. I'm Ken Palowski. I'm a homeowner and proud Matherian and president of the HOA for Independence at Mather. And I can tell you, a few months ago, well, it's starting to feel a little, even though it was a few weeks ago, it's starting to feel a little bit like Groundhog's Day here as I'm going to echo a lot of the thoughts that everybody's been sharing. A few months ago, when I came to some of the meetings with this, I, I came viewing the developers and a lot of county staff, as a lot of others did, more as opponents. And I had people and friends telling me, kind of patting me on the back and saying, "Oh, isn't that nice? You're going to, you know, argue against this, but, you know, nothing's going to change." And I can say that my attitude has gone from dismay to concern to cautious optimism to now being optimistic and looking forward to true excitement. As we came into this process, you know, we were not happy with the way things were. But under the great guidance and leadership of Supervisor Natoli and then the guidance of the board, listening to the public out there, we've seen what public, what the public process truly can be and has set an example. And just working together with all of staff, it's just been an incredible process to know that together we can work to make something that's truly great and to step back and to do this right and that this is something that I'm truly proud to be a part of. I'm part of the stakeholders group and that it's truly an amazing process and I can't thank you enough and staff and the developers have been fantastic. They've even taken our visions and have expanded and taken those beyond even what we thought was capable. And I just look forward to continuing to be part of this process and turning this into something truly spectacular and to being the first part of the process that's going to be developing that part. So just thank you again. I can't say that enough and I look forward to being part of this process.
Thank you and thank you for all your time and effort on this, too. And next speaker will be Roxanne Fuentes.
I just wanted to reiterate what the Mather Field Wetlands Preserve is about. It's an outdoor classroom for people from all over the world and has been featured on Hugh Hauzer's TV show. This vernal pool habitat is federally and state listed and the land was originally set aside as conservation land. In fact, the Air Force did a good job of protecting it. And I think it should be designated as permanently protected wetland habitat. The spade foot pool is home to the only remaining population of western spade foot toads at Mather Field. These toads are under consideration for federal listing under the Endangered Species Act. The Splash Critter Pool is home to the greatest diversity of threatened and endangered vernal pool invertebrates at Mather Field. Thousands of elementary school children come to Mather each year as part of the Sacramento Splash program and hundreds more students come from local colleges to study vernal pool and grassland ecology. Artists, photographers, ecologists, bird watchers, and others from around the globe come to these pools. These pool areas need to be protected from noise, light, air, and traffic pollution. In fact, the preserve boundaries should be expanded to the east to provide a buffer zone for animals, plants, surface drainages, and shallow groundwater flow. Vernal swells and upland habitats are important parts of the ecosystem and need to be protected. And Zinfandel should only be a two-lane road erected away from the area. The UDA should be redesignated as Mather South Special Planning Area and this should include the REC and PQP areas. The university, which is PQP, plans should be dropped. And the REC Sports Park should be relocated to the north, to the IND Zone closer to the soccer complex, which will limit stadium light pollution. I also want to point out something else. Fannie Mae's Chief Executive Officer told Financial Times on Friday, February 19th, 2016, that Fannie Mae's capital buffer was on track to disappear by January 2018. This will probably have a negative effect on housing prices if they have to get another bailout from the US Treasury, so you guys might want to think about that before you talk about building more and more houses. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. The rest of the people signed up to speak are wishing to speak regarding the proposed Mather Sports Village. And there are 12, 12 speakers and I'm in the process of resetting the clock. They approached me yesterday about speaking as a group and so I indicated that based on the number of people, they could have a total of 30 minutes to use, however you choose, whether all 12 of you wish to speak or a smaller number, but that's the total number of minutes that you have to use. And if you wish, we do have an overhead if you wish to show any of your slides on the overhead projector. It's right there next to you.
We're going to conserve our time since we didn't get that here earlier and that's our apology, but we'll, we'll work through that.
Okay.
So thank you, Madam Chair.
So this, I just wanted to, if you could state your name for the record, please.
My name is Whitney Bibbins. I'm one of the principals of Mather Sports Village. And I'd like to thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board for allowing us to be here today. We two were here on September the 16th thinking there was going to be an environmental improvement of Phase One of the document at the Mather South complex. When all the folks showed up on, from Mather and the Alliance and Splash, we got it. We stayed here for the full four and a half hours. We chose not to say anything at that point in time. At the end of the meeting or during the meeting, the board directed that there would be a continuing discussion on what was going to happen down at the Mather South area. And for some reason, as things progressed into the stakeholder groups that were set up or the group that was set up, we were not included as part of the stakeholder group, although we thought we should have been part of the stakeholders. And again, I know a lot of you on the board don't know much about the project. We have information that we've brought today that you'll be able to review later. We've been involved in this project with the county and with Saybrook, with Brian Masterman for 11 years now, starting with Clark- Masterman, for 11 years now, starting with Clark Whitten when we met him out at Mather at the real estate office and then he came downtown in 2006. We've been to many, many, many meetings at the Board. We've been to many meetings. Once Lewis Communities joined the Mather South Team with Saybrook. We've come to many, many, many meetings over this 10-year period. And county staff has always been involved and been very good at talking with us. We've drafted plans. We've spent thousands and thousands of dollars and hours over the 10 years. And we just want the Board to understand that we've been in here. My partner, Gary Powers, will speak in just a minute. Gary has built more baseball fields, parks, and playground areas probably than anybody in the country. And we can address how sports complex can interface on a great basis with the Economic Conservation Committee. So, I'm just going to kind of skip through some things because I know our time is short. In 2008, after much work with the staff, the county decided, and I believe back in 2006, that they wanted to have a sports complex piece at the Mather South area. And so, we started working with staff at that point. The county put an RFQ together. We responded to it with about 10 other groups and we were awarded that RFQ. And in March 2009, we were awarded the exclusive right to negotiate for the property, for the, at that point, 135 acres. As far as the economic impact side of our project, we will submit to you, I don't know if we got them into the record today, we have three economic study reports, one headlined by Cal Ripken's Design Group, that the City of Rancho Cordova Tourism Group paid $20,000 for that study. In 2007, as we were trying to realize if we had a viable project, we got a copy of the Roseville Parks and Rec Economic Report that showed over $2 million in economic impact because of softball and baseball at Roseville. In 2010, the Rancho Cordova TBID commissioned a private marketing study. The end result, if you read through that study and you probably haven't seen that, the end result was they needed more sports complexes in the area to drive heads-on-beds in Rancho Cordova. In 2013, as we continued to work with the county and the staff, April 13th, 2012, we went to the Parks and Rec Department meeting and there was an approval of the sublease for approximately 85 acres that Eva mentioned for the rugby sports complex out by the Department of Defense Ball at Mather. And there was non-alcoholic beverage served and I can tell you, I was there and the 30 or 40 people that were in the room were cheering because after all these years, finally something sports-related was going to start happening at Mather. Later on in the summer of 2010, we met with Brad Hillard. I don't know if Brad's here today, from the Sacramento Convention and Business Bureau and also representing the Sacramento Sports Commission. But we got a report from him showing all the available venues in this area for sports and it showed an overwhelming need. In 2013, that report was updated. I just got a copy of it and that need is still there. Our community outreach, we tried to be good stewards and we've tried to be good partners with the county and with Mather South and with Lewis Communities over the last five or six years that Lewis has been at the table. And in 2011, as part of our community outreach, we met with the Sacramento Parks and Rec Advisory Committee at Cherry Island Golf Course. There were about 50 people there, including people from Mather. And the biggest request from the people at Mather was they would like to have a dog park at the sports complex across the way from Mather. And we told them, "No problem. We will give you a dog park." Later on, I got on the SEDS Committee, which you're aware of, as part of the process that needed to go on at Mather. And Ken, who has already spoken today, Ken Palowski was also on that committee. We got to be associates, friends, had lunch together a couple times. He liked the project. He invited me to come out to the homeowners' meeting on September the 13th, 2012, 2013, which I did. There were 100 people in the audience. We posted our big poster of the project. After the meeting, I stayed. There were eight or 10 people that came over and spoke with me. There wasn't one objection to the project at that date. Rick Velaz was also there and he was presenting the Zinfandel Sewer Extension as far back as 2013. The big thing that happened on this project was the county wanted to start seeing the money because we've been at this process for so long. On February the 10th last year, we had a meeting with the Mather South folks, the Lewis Community people, our team. And we brought with us the financial group that was going to back the project to the tune of $100 million. That group is called Terra9 LLC. I didn't bring information on them. You can find them. Dusty Baker is in that group. Dusty attended that meeting and is still in that group. We've continued today to stay in touch with John Ryan, the managing partner. And they're standing ready, willing, and able to put this project together. The reason that we're here today and we didn't speak on September the 16th was because we didn't understand what was going to happen on the 16th with the environmental community. Gary's going to tell you in a few minutes when we build fields and he builds fields, they're economic, they're not only economically built, but they're environmentally friendly. We reuse the water. We have a storage system that we can put under the fields for an emergency preparedness zone. And so, if a big firestorm like happened at Eldorado Hills a few years ago occurred, people could come there as a gathering point. I talked to people at Rancho Cordova City and they said the city hall is a point of gathering for emergency. Coming out to our fields, which would fit in perfectly with the, all the environmental changes that are being discussed, will go along great. And Eva, thank you very much for asking us to talk with you after this because we've wanted to do that for a long time. As far as the slides that I have, you have those with you and I included in there people, and by the way, it was last Wednesday, a week ago, that we started to understand that there was going to be a, in the documents that have been presented here today, the sports park had been eliminated because of the consensus of the Stakeholders Group, of which we were not a part of. So, we stand here today asking you, as the environmental group, as Alliance, as Splash did September the 16th, please tell the staff and that group to allow us to come in. We have a lot, a lot of great things to offer, environmentally friendly things that would fit perfectly out there. So, we're hoping that's one of the things that we can get from today. Now, what are the benefits? Real quick, for Sacramento County, I've got 10 on here. You don't have the list that I'm reading off of, but this would be a further enhancement of the metropolitan area as a premier entertainment and youth sports destination. Property tax increases. We would create jobs, summer jobs for kids, right there. The kids that live at Mather, which there are many, which we are now finding out, could come over and work right there. There'd be an increase in tourism revenue from teams that travel out. This is not a local sports group. This is an outreach to bring teams in from out of town. We would be using the Mather Airport for teams to land. So, there would be an expanded use of the airport. We would have state-of-the-art fields and courts for thousands of young and old athletes in the area that they could claim as home. The heads-on-beds tax that you get would be 12% to the county. We're prepared to protect the environment, working with our team of experts to sit down with the stakeholder team and share our ideas as well as the ideas that are already out there. There'd be an overall pride to the community, along with the Rayleigh Field, Bonnie Field, and the new Kings Dome downtown. Just think what that brings to the community. And one of the things I forgot to mention, which you all do know, Warren Smith is one of our partners in this project and he's had quite a bit of hand in a lot of the things that are going on. What would be the benefit to Alliance and Splash? We would put in an education program and I think Eva mentioned, 3,000 kids a year get educated. We would have several thousand kids over the year. We would have kiosks out on the site. We could drive kids, thousands of kids, that would never learn about environmental issues, conservation, wetlands, fairy shrimp. They could learn that while they're there playing sports with us. We would have a goodwill partnership with them. We have wildlife enthusiasts that are part of our group that could work hand-in-hand with them. And this would end up being a great regional example of how development and conservation efforts can coexist and improve quality of life and economic viability. How does this benefit Mather South and Lewis Communities? Having a sports park near their homes gives them a new strategy for selling their houses. We looked at a study in a sports project in Atlanta, Georgia recently. Before a complex was built there, the average price of the houses was $115 a square feet, a foot, and after that, it's $250 a square foot. We have copies of that report. So, we stand here again before you after 10 years. Rob was at the beginning of those meetings with us. I've watched Clark's kids grow up. So, it's not that we haven't been here. We've just tried to be a good partner and not crowd in. But now, it's time for us to be heard and have our voice heard. So, we're asking today two things. Allow us to come into the stakeholder meetings so our voice can be heard and let our professionals work with the professionals that are already at the table. And I know I've taken a bunch of time. We do have people here. You're going to hear some comments on some Mather folks, sports folks that live out there that had no idea until this week what was going on with this project. So, we'd like, at this time, I will defer to them and we would like to have them start and you can call them, Madam Chair. Also in your packet, you have letters of endorsement already, one from Terra9, our funding group, Standing Ready, Willing, and Able. And you can see the others. I won't take the time, but you know most of those groups. Several of them are local business groups. Jerry is here from the rugby group and he told me earlier today, Jerry, are you going to speak? Jerry told me today that just alone, in the Northern California area, there are 5,000 rugby kids. And the theme that you're going to hear and the theme that you know is there are not enough sports facilities out here and that's what the Convention Center report said. And also, in your packet is a letter from the Rancho Cordova Police Activities League lady, who I spoke with yesterday. Again, we have assembled all of what you're seeing since Friday. So, give us a chance and we will show you that the sports community can not only help this project, but the sports community also has a voice and should be heard. So, with that, thank you very much, Madam Chair, Board. Any questions from anybody at the Board?
There are 15 minutes left in the time. I don't know if everyone had planned to speak, but that's the amount of time that's left.
That's fine. Thank you.
So, I can call on people just in order and if you wish to speak, you can get up and speak. If not, you can pass, but we just have a total of 15 minutes left. So, the first person, the next person on the list is Don Trotman.
Okay.
Pass. Okay. Vic Samble.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. I will be extremely brief, considering we have 15 minutes. But my name's Vic Samble. I'm a resident of Rancho Cordova. I live about five minutes where the proposed site is going to be. Reason I'm here today is because sports have been a huge part of my life and I'm raising two children right now, who I'm coaching. My five-year-old is in T-ball and I've known about this project for a long time. I've been following it. I know Gary Powers. He's been a friend of mine for a couple of years and I know Whitney Bibbins, who just spoke. So, I asked him, "What can I do?" And he said, "Well, let's try to find some support." You know, I only had about a day to do it. I tried to get people here, but unfortunately, such short notice, people couldn't put in time to get off of work. Fortunately for me, I already had the day off for a doctor appointment, so I was able to make it. But like I said, my daughter is in T-ball. We play over at Mills Middle School and the facilities over there are not great. It's poorly lit at night, so when the sun goes down, we have to get out of there. So, we have to start practice a little bit earlier. And I think, you know, and while there's also some activity over there that's undesirable, there is some crime. And having a facility like this, there's going to be more light, there's going to be security, and it just seems like a great sports complex for us to pass on to our children. So, I'm going to leave it at that. I had a lot more to say, but what I did do is I did gather some information, some letters, and I made copies of them.
Give those to our clerk.
I'll submit those and I'll let other people talk.
Thank you.
But thank you for giving us time today.
Next speaker is Tom Monero, if he wishes to speak.
Madam Chair, to save the time, I'd like to do Bruce.
Okay. Then Gary Powers.
I'm one of the principals of Mather Sports Village. I'm also the one that's been building these facilities for the last 35 years. And Whitney mentioned that there's probably nobody that's built more than me. That's a fact and it's probably on the West Coast for sure. I was involved with building Disney Sports World. So, the background that we have going into this with the environment is tremendous. We understand it, we manage it, we know how to build it, build around it, and use it as part of our stuff. So, even though Splash has never talked to us, they're going to find us as probably their best friend. The county is going to find us as a friend because we're probably the only project at Mather in the development that is, that has no negative impact on the environment. No negative impact on the environment, except possibly light. Everything else is going to be a plus for the county or their concerns. I had a bunch of stuff here. I'm just going to kind of go over this. We estimate that direct economic impact, the direct, not indirect, direct to Sacramento and the neighbors, will be about $26.3 million from our project a year. Okay? Plus, that doesn't even include the $9.2 million generated by the taxes that MSV will generate. There's also plus or minus 248 new jobs that will be there. Our concept is to help build a community with youth, at-risk youth, the disabled, veterans, and also Splash. Splash is involved with youth and that's our business. Think about this. What if Splash can have an event at MSV, Mather Sports Village, with youth sports included in that event? They can have 350, 400 kids come to an environmental Olympics. Okay? The power of that is huge. I can tell you because I was the National Director for AAU National Baseball for many years. The power of sports with children is tremendous. So, if that be, they can be exposed to the important stuff that Splash does and the community will have to offer. This is inner-city kids. This may be 50 kids from Detroit. Okay? That may be the first time in their life, when they come here, because sports is involved, they're going to see a vernal pool. They're going to see a critter pool. What kind of impact is that going to be on that young person for the rest of their life? If it's done right, it's going to have a tremendous impact. That's why we are your friends. MSV thinks that instead of saying or asking, "Why should we have Mather Sports Village?", we believe that everyone in this room should be standing on their rooftops and screaming, "Why not?", because the impact is going to be tremendous. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. The next speaker is Jerry Allen.
Thank you. I'm Jerry Allen with Sacramento Valley Rugby Foundation, and I'm here today in support of the complex, the village, that Whitney and Gary have just spoken about. Our SAC Valley Rugby Foundation and soccer have a lease already out at the Mather Regional Park. And when I started on it, my hair was a color as dawn's, so it's been a number of years ago. I was found one of the members of the Friends of Mather Park with Marilyn Evans, so my feelings for parks are very near and dear. Also, I'm a member of the Rancho Cordova Athletic Association. Facilities in Rancho Cordova and that area are very limited, and the city of Rancho is working very hard to correct those things with providing money, and we're getting input from all the sports. Eventually, we look to have our rugby soccer complex completed, which will provide a lot of fields and really huge savings for our youth rugby programs in California, Northern California, which are growing at an incredible pace. And as Whitney mentioned, we are now have hit in excess of 5,000 boys and girls from ages six to age 18 that are playing youth rugby. We're getting ready to start touch leagues in Folsom and Rancho Cordova within the next six months. So, things are moving along very rapidly, but the need for additional facilities, the baseball, the other sports that Whitney and his group are presenting, we're fully supportive of. Can I answer any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. And the next speaker is Jerry Manuel.
I think Jerry's tied up in another meeting here.
Okay. Okay. Then Ed Feldman.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. My name is Ed Feldman, I'm the National Director for All World Sports. My organization has been charged to run the baseball and softball operations at the Mather Sports Village upon opening. And we've built a working relationship with Mr. Bivens and Mr. Powers since 2011, and we've been involved in a lot of the processes in their pre-development stages. And to kind of give you an idea of the groundswell that we've, of support that we've been building for this village, our organization has an outreach of approximately 25,000 members, kids that play youth baseball and girls' fast pitch in our local footprint, which is Northern California, Northern Nevada. And these organizations, primarily academies and clubs, also have an outreach that go to local leagues, Little Leagues, Bobby Sox, things of that nature. And the groundswell, the support of the Mather Sports Village, has been tremendous. They're going to be lining up to give letters of support of this village, because there's going to be nothing like this in Northern California, and they're all going to want to participate and be part of this vision here. Beyond what the Mather Sports Village will do for the local community is the support, the ramifications financially for you will be nothing short of miraculous. We are receiving as an organization for All World Sports, support from counties, CVBs, cities, in terms of grant money to come in and run events of large national stature in their communities. And what we'll be able to do here at the Mather Sports Village is consolidate all that right here in one local environment and create amazing national events and bring a lot of heads and beds right here in Rancho Cordova and Sacramento County. So, we really hope that you will support this vision. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Butch Bacala. Not here. John Kuntel.
I defer.
Okay. Derek Evans.
Present.
Not present. And Ray Belcher. You're up.
Good afternoon, Lady Chair, Men and Board. About nine months ago, I was brought to the awareness of this facility. I work with AT&amp;T Ballpark, I've been with AT&amp;T Ballpark, and working with them since '010, where we provide soil amendments and inoculants. And also, one of the companies I represent brings in a soilless soil product that has a high ratio of filtration. And we thought at the time, that, we looked at the university trial studies, that we had a very unique product, especially in the area of water filtration. It has no adverse effect on their environment or affecting any indigenous species in their environment. But enhancement, what we're looking for, the standards is higher than EPA, especially when EPA takes over in '07, '17. So, we do have this quality that we can implement into different types of facilities and sites. What we're looking at AT&amp;T Ballpark as being one of the first facilities in the U.S. that will be totally self-sustained. In other words, if we're able to store the water on-site, run it through their system, and have it at a great quality, that's all just below human consumption. That's what I brought to Mr. Whitney Bivens, as well as Gary Powers, that we can implement this into a facility and be able to have a subterranean vault where the water is stored, filtered, at any given time, reduce those particulates, especially in fertilizers and nitrates, and reduce that if they are used, and have it at a facility where it can be accessible in case of you having any type of emergency procedure responders that need that type of amount of water. We're talking about storages up into the hundreds of thousands, if not millions, of gallons on-site. And also, having the ability of this material, it's already been presently used in the state of California in three different sites to process wastewater. One of them is the Marine Corps Recruiting Station in San Diego, that was put in by a company called Living Machine. They process over 10,000 gallons of water a day. The second site was up in Santa Cruz, and the last site is at the PUC Building at 525 Golden Gate Avenue in San Francisco. What we're looking at is having the most unique site in probably the West Coast, if we're not in the, you know, U.S., is being able to be self-sufficient. And self-sufficient where it's not drawing on those outside resources are very vital at this stage of our history, because it's not on this, out here in California, it's on a national level, especially in light of EPA looking at that on a national level of having higher quality of materials to be used for filtration and water recovery and efficiency of using water effectively. That's why I brought this information to, you know, the athletic sports facility, and I think it's going to be the most unique thing in the West Coast, to have that, to be self-sustained, and plus, being able to be a model for those who are looking at their environment, what we can really do to an environment to enhance it. That's what I, looking at my time here, trying to squeeze it all in, but that's what we are looking at to bring to the sports facilities out at Mather. I hope I can answer anybody's questions later on how we are going to achieve this, only at this site and many other sites in California, of having better quality of water, because we have a better material base that can now address that than it was as a standard materials that have been presently used and the ones that are used in the past. I thank you for your time, for allowing me to at least make our presentation of what we're going to bring to the facility at Mather. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bivens, you have a little over two minutes left, if you wish to say any final words or not.
Well, thank you very much. Anybody, oh, Lyle, I'd like to say something. I'll defer to Lyle West.
Okay. Is he signed up? No. Okay. If you could, after you speak, turn in a speaker sheet to our clerk, that'd be very helpful.
No problem. Thanks for letting me get this last couple of minutes. And my name's Lyle West, I represent millions of men and women across the country that grew up playing sports, and I think we could all agree that sports is, nothing brings people together more than sports does in our nation, right, wrong, or indifferent. And I began playing sports when I was six years old, and was able to play all the way into the NFL for six years, and that's why I got involved with Mather Sports, was because of how important sports were in my life, in character building, teamwork, communicating with people from different backgrounds, et cetera. And unless we've had our heads in the sand, obviously, Northern California is huge for girls' softball, boys' baseball, basketball, football. I actually was a volunteer football player.
Rugby, don't forget rugby.
Oh, rugby. Hold on, I only got a minute. So, the reason I got involved with the sports complex is because, like many of those that have wrote letters of intent, Dusty Baker, Jerry Manuel, all the different professional coaches and former players, was because we want to implement the same things in the young children that are coming up. It's not the goal to get these kids to be professional athletes, it's to get them in your guys' seats, and because that's the type of character that it takes and the background that they get through sports in order to do that. And so, what I think is very clear here today is that we have been involved in this for 10 years, I've been involved for the better half of eight or nine years, and what we're asking for is to not be pushed out of the table and to, we want to embrace Splash. You know, I'm an avid yoga instructor, and I practice yoga all the time, so I get the environmental side of it. And Whitney has been nothing but open to the ideas. We've wanted to engage, but we haven't been, you can't engage with somebody that you're not at a meeting with, right? So, what we're asking for today is this more engagement and to not, not take away this opportunity for Sacramento to be one of the biggest in the United States as far as youth sports is concerned, and to bring a great opportunity for our community to kind of put our stamp on something, and it's going to be amazing. Just let us communicate a little bit better, and I think we'll all agree that we're willing to work with everybody that's at the table, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I need to reset this clock, which takes a little more time than the old-fashioned way, but we do have one more person who has signed up to speak, and that is George Phillips. So, I'm getting closer here. Okay.
Chairman Glash, a member of the Board, members of the Board, George Phillips here this afternoon on behalf of Sacramento Rendering Company, Sacramento Ranches, and the New Bridge specific plan. First, I'm glad I made the list, I thought I was going to need a tutorial on how to do it electronically. I'm used to the old-fashioned way, and one never knows what one's going to get trying to teach an old dog new tricks, but I made it, so I'm really excited about that.
You made the list.
I made the list, I made the list. I think you all know of our concern relative to this issue. I think kudos to everyone involved, and obviously, there's been those mentioned already today about everyone's effort since September of last year and coming together to work on the environmental resources and avoiding some of those key environmental resources in the Mather Field Area. As you know, the New Bridge specific plan has been in active application with the county since November of 2011. We were in a pre-app process, it probably went for a year before that. And you know that we're at a very detailed stage of our planning effort, our land plan is shown on Attachment 7, and you can see the level of detail that we've worked on with your staff and also the regulatory agencies over that time period. And I think the one thing, having done that, that we want to stress to Board members is that whatever the alignment, ultimate alignment is for either Eagles Nest or the extension of Zinfandel, whatever we call it, between Douglas and Kiefer, we would definitely be supportive and would urge the Board to retain the right-of-way for a four-lane facility. Obviously, we also urge you to maintain that connection because of its value to the sub-regional circulation system. And then, just to hope you're aware, and if not to make you aware, that there are some unintended consequences of that alignment potentially as it relates to the intersection with Kiefer Boulevard and how it proceeds then south. There is a ripple effect to our land plan, and even more importantly, potentially to some of the environmental resources on the Sacramento Rendering property. We have property totaling about a little over 800 acres, over 250 acres of that is going to be in, is going to be preserved permanently because of the wetland resources on those properties. We are not touching the property, the portion of the property, 182 acres, that's west of Eagles Nest Road, because that is critical habitat for the tadpole fairy shrimp. So, we're totally avoiding that area. And we have internally another preserve totaling about over 70 acres that are maintaining and preserving the best vernal pools on the property. One of which is a priority to the Army Corps of Engineers, and it is the northernmost resource in our preserve along adjacent to Eagles Nest Road and could be affected by these future alignments. So, our request is just to keep in part of your consideration those perhaps unintended consequences of that alignment, and to the extent possible, minimize those impacts to New Bridge's resources and land plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Phillips.
Thanks, George.
That concludes the public testimony. It now comes back to the Board of Supervisors for discussion and recommended Board actions. Mr. Nattoli.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A couple of things, and we'll turn to staff here on, the first of them, we've certainly heard input today on the Sports Village, and I do want to say from the get-go that certainly the stakeholder process wasn't meant to be exclusionary in any way, and certainly, the effort was not to discount good faith, participation, and certainly, response to county requests for proposals some years ago as related to Sports Village, you know, going out to Marketplace on the University, certainly Lewis Holmes' response, Sabre and others, as a part of, are looking at the overall development and the designation of uses in the Mather complex. And so, certainly want to acknowledge that right from the get-go, and certainly, Whitney and others that have spoken here today, again, have been long associated with that project. And I guess what I want to ask about, and I've got some other comments on some other items, but Leanne, you alluded earlier in the presentation that if we were to go with a UDA designation, that it would not preclude further discussion and/or, I think, and I do think that having the stakeholder group and the folks that have been a part of discussions as it relates to certainly the direction this board gave was to take a step back in September. I think there was clearly an intent to gravitate towards a plan which would better reflect the focus on vernal pools, the importance of that preserve, of the environmental aspects there, but again, it didn't exclude certainly that we were going to have some developable lands as a part of that, and that's, I think, reflected in comments by some of the speakers earlier on today. But I guess, to the point here about, you know, certainly, Mr. Bivens, Mr. Powers, and others that have been a part of the process of a Sports Village, to allow them the opportunity certainly to present to the stakeholders group, to get consideration about how, with the current outline that's been presented with, again, there's still some blanks to be filled in there, how this, you know, might fit into that, and, you know, whether it would, you know, would be a fit, but I think certainly in fairness to the folks in the conversation today, so I guess I'd ask you to maybe weigh in on that, you or Todd, as to your thoughts about that, and what direction you might need from this board to, at least at this juncture, where, you know, we've got some elements here that are going to be very critical, preserving the spade foot and toad and the critter pools and expanding your preserve, but we have some other yet undefines as it relates to Zinfandel and some of the extent of, you know, the areas and the watersheds of some of those vernal pools and so forth, work to be done as outlined. So, maybe take a moment and kind of expand about how we might engage over the course of the next few months, because I think you intend to come back sometime early to midsummer, and to give an opportunity for folks to have, you know, again, in good faith with folks that have responded to county's request for their interest some time ago.
Right. So, we've been taking notes, I have five items on my list, the sports park being item number four. And as you've indicated, I think the first thing is to make sure that we include them in the stakeholder process and make sure that that's vetted. But really, what I want to talk about is this Mather Field project and the subsequent Mather South project. I think what we need to do in the context of the Mather Field project is make sure that... I think what we need to do in the context of the Mather Field project is make sure that the sports park isn't precluded and that it's analyzed at a more high-level programmatic sort of way. Because this, the Mather Field project, isn't really analyzing uses. We're not analyzing, you know, what kind of residential, what kind of commercial, so we're trying to do that at a more high-level sort of way. So, we will, but there may be different traffic implications, so we probably do need to have some, you know, sort of general sets of assumptions with a sports park or without a sports park in the Mather Field project. And then I think, and others may want to weigh in, I think then it's really the subsequent Mather South project that's going to really be weighing the options and alternatives about different land use configurations and different land uses in a more detailed sort of manner. So that's sort of how I'm thinking that we should set this up. But you're right, that the initial Mather Field project needs to make sure that if there are differences in circulation or impacts on the preserve, that we do look at it at a more programmatic level. Would that work for the board?
Lighting, again, I know lighting was just getting, okay.
Yeah, lighting and runoff maybe or in traffic or a couple of the things, we'd have to sort of scope out what level of detail we need to do. But I think some would be in Mather Field and some that might need to follow in the Mather South project.
Well, let me ask just on that though, then, you know, Mather South will bring in the project that they think is the best fit based upon obviously their participation, certainly in the stakeholder process, but, and then, you know, whatever they see as being, and things that will, you know, best suit to their proposal, again, obviously for this board's, you know, ultimate decision at some juncture. So, is it up to Lewis Holmes under Mather South or Sabre or who will determine as to what the plan that they would bring forward, whether, you know, again, would include a Sports Village component, whatever that might look like, or not, I guess, you know? Because we'll see what's proposed, come forward to us, we would hold the door open potentially by doing a UDA. But at a decision outside these chambers, I trust the proposal didn't include that. And, you know, not that the county would necessarily direct it, although it's been done in the county's direction thus far with the university and the recreational designations. So is there a decision point that this board needs to get to sooner rather than later? Or is, I think the analysis part makes sense to me, but at what juncture, you know, for the question posed here today, you know, are they in or out, ultimately it's the board's decision. But if they don't get analyzed at the, you know, specific use level in a plan, then that's going to be a foregone, so I guess.
Right. I'm not sure I have a definitive answer to that. I mean, I think the board may need to weigh in, I'm not sure that we're, I don't think we're prepared to have you do that today.
Okay.
It's not something we were necessarily queued up to do, so that may need some additional discussion and follow-up. And we may, staff may need to think more about how to handle that and how to have the board weigh in as to what kind of project you want to see Mather South or alternatives come forward. So that may need some additional follow-up, I would think.
All right. But you think for today's purposes, there, again, to allow for the further discussion, I think the presentation and again, under the specific plan portion of it, that the coverage is there. And again, you are asking though, with the university piece of that, the quasi-public piece of it, that that goes away?
Right.
And blends into the UDA. If the recreation portion blends into the UDA, then you analyze that appropriately, traffic levels and other considerations. And then, as you just said, you're going to think, reflect on it a bit and at a future juncture come back to this board with, if there's a decision point made relative to direction for the Mather South plan.
Yeah. I think, yes, we would, we would stand by the recommendation to essentially replace evaluating the university with the alternative educational sports park, but we'd probably maybe modify the tone of what's in the staff report, which is that staff should make sure that we don't preclude the sports park from being a component of the UDA area.
Okay. The Alternative Education Environmental Center, I think you meant to say, that the Alternative Education Sports Park.
Sorry.
Someone did mention that.
My brain is, sorry.
Yeah, that was a high degree blend, I think Mr. Bibbins mentioned that.
My brain and mouth aren't quite connecting there. Yes, thank you.
Okay. All right. And then I guess the other question I had for staff, and you're going to go through some things, was just as it relates to the Zinfandel alignment or Eagles Nest, again, we renated it under a previous action, but that's something, again, that this board, to Lisa's point, we, I know she's mentioned it a couple of times, that we can come back to, you know, again, but the road, its location, its utility, all of those things are very, very critical aspects and I don't take anything away from the name itself. But to the point that Mr. Phillips, certainly representing, you know, the Kohler family and the Newbridge Development Proposal, that Dean's work on the proposed alignment must be analyzed. They do have some impact to the south as we connect. And I guess the point I would want to make, and maybe Dean, you could address this, but, you know, you talk a lot about in the staff report about the non-standard or deviation from, you know, standard alignments and so forth. And I guess, as I have said to you in conversation, and I think I've mentioned it to the group, at least in part, that we're going to design a road that works certainly from a standpoint of moving people and goods, but it needs to be, you know, compatible, at least in my view, with the preserve, certainly with the development that it will serve, people that it will serve. And that if it has more curves, or if it's a slower speed, or if it has to, coming at a point that doesn't, you know, fit the exact engineering, I mean, you're going to do what, you know, you're guided by obviously policy documents, engineering guidance and so forth. But my suggestion would be that as you analyze that, that you give that, you know, full range of abilities to exercise discretion, not to make for an unsafe facility. But it may be different than what, it certainly be different than a straight alignment that would have a, you know, a design capacity of 55 or 60 miles per hour, maybe posted for 45 or 50 versus one that's going to have curves and may be designed for no more than 40 and maybe posted at 35. But I think, you know, there's a range out there and we're going to look at those, but I want to be sure that we've got that. Again, you've designed within the limits and even pushing a bit under the standard engineering guidance, but this board, I think, needs to have that flexibility as we look at it. Again, we want to have a safe facility, but that interface with the preserve and certainly how it serves a community that would develop to the east and to the north, any other uses in there, that needs to be contemplated and certainly to the south. And so, again, I don't know if you want to respond to that, but again, if you need guidance around that, I for one think that, you know, we don't have a standard situation. We've got a large vernal pool preserve, we have a lot of community engagement, we've got uses that are for our consideration now and in the future, and we ultimately will decide on those. But I think the road is a key component and we've come a long ways since September when this chamber was filled with a lot of folks who said they didn't want a Zinfandel there at all. And we've got work to do yet, and again, I commend your work. So if you want to weigh in.
That's one of the reasons why you see six different alternatives there. Having, knowing that Newbridge was directly to the south and knew that that was a potential constraint, I was aware of that. And so some of the alignments do better at minimizing impacts down there, some have zero impact on the alignment. But there's trade-offs between all these alignments. And I kept a very open mind in the design, I'm used to designing straight roads, but gotten quite good at getting curvilinear roads as well, so.
Not everything at a 90-degree angle.
That, I draw a line there, but we have some of those on Scott Road, but.
Yes.
No, we recognize and I've taken great liberties in trying to relax standards and doing what was necessary to try to fit the road to the environment out there in the various constraints. So we'll keep that open mind as we proceed through this and try to have, analyze all the different alignments and what their benefits and disadvantages are and advantages to all the concerns out here, whether they be wetland resources or adjacent projects.
Okay. Well, and again, just to, you know, how intersections align, you've got certain standards and, you know, if it's a non-standard intersection, we'll, you know, build in the safety factor and it'll just have to be at a slower speed and.
Right. It will not be unsafe, it would just be non-centered, just, interesting.
Conventional. Okay. All right, well, that's good. Again, and thank you for your effort. Again, I know that it's been much appreciated by a lot of folks, so, okay. Well, ma'am chair, I just, again, Leanne's got a last, I know other members of the board want to speak. I would just say that as it relates certainly to the Sports Village and the testimony, that, again, I think there's certainly a willingness by this member of the board to allow that proposal to be heard by the stakeholder group, to, you know, have a conversation in the context of, again, with the priority being on the preservations of the vernal pools and the setbacks and, you know, the things that are going to be guided by further study and further work. But to, again, allow it to, you know, be vetted through the process, it, you know, was part of the 2006 direction. Again, we've moved away certainly on the university part of it and there may still be a room within the context of all this and certainly the lands at Mather to incorporate, you know, some of that vision and maybe it is a fit. But I think that's yet to be determined as it relates to some of the new components in the plan. And I do want to, again, just add, lastly, that I want to compliment certainly the Lewis Group and the others who have, again, worked very closely with folks and I think have developed some very strong relationships and I'm hopeful that in the next few months we can continue to work and we've got some other decision points that have been made by this board, but I think we'll be guided by the involvement of people here in the audience and others who have contributed in many different ways. So, thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Serna.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I won't take along here, I just wanted to start by certainly thanking everyone that took time out of their busy schedules to be here, to, again, remind this board and to thank staff for the spirit of collaboration that has gotten to this point. At one point, I think, maybe after the third speaker, I was wondering what people had in their cornflakes this morning, because I wanted some of that. But, no, it's, I have to admit, it's pretty rare in that we see that kind of sentiment expressed by a community over a project like this so early in the process. And so it's, I think, certainly worthy of mention to thank all involved. I also want to certainly thank my colleague, Don Natoli. Whatever magic you still have, Don, I want you to come sprinkle some of that on some of the projects in my district, because as many mentioned earlier, I think you've been at the center of really trying to make sure all the various moving parts to this are literally, figuratively coming together to have productive conversation and to find areas of common interest. And then lastly, certainly to the Lewis Group and Mr. Rodriguez and his colleagues, I think they've been extremely open-minded and actually very, very creative in exploring the kind of concepts that they've come to each of us individually to explain and certainly mentioned here today. So thanks to all.
Mr. Kennedy, do you have anything?
I can't add anything to that.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to observe also that this is a far different hearing than the one that we held in September and shorter as well as earlier. And more pleasant. And I think that it is a good object lesson in local government that we really do listen to people and by doing that, we can end up with a product that everyone can be proud of and that will be of benefit to the community. So with that, I will turn to Mr. Natoli for a motion.
Yeah, I believe Leanne was going to offer some additional comments to the actions that were here, Madam Chair, so if I could maybe turn to her. And before we do that, I would be remiss if I didn't thank each of you once again for, I think, very clear and direct action in September that I think sent a message to all involved that we needed to roll up our sleeves and go back to the, you know, drawing board and really work on this. And I think, again, that clear, you know, statement at the conclusion of the September hearing really helped, I think, provide a bit of an aura that we've all worked under. And so thanks to each of you for your willingness to sit through the four and a half hour hearing then and certainly today's hearing, it is a different tenor to your point, Ms. Chair. And certainly thanks to Patrick and to Phil too for your level of involvement as well. And again, I think we'll get there, you know, it won't be all roses, I can assure you, there will probably be a few bumps along the road and we've got some specifics.
Native plants, not roses.
Native plants then, so wild roses. At any rate, again, we are making good progress and again, thanks to each of you. So I don't know, Leanne, if you want to add something, I'm prepared to make a motion, obviously, if you want to.
Just to confirm, what I have is my list, in addition to the overall project, just some of the specific items that came up today. Reporting back on options in both the context of the SEQA document and the planning document on the industrial area with the mining overlay, give the board some options there for consideration. You had a good discussion with Dean about Douglas Road, that's something DOT will work on. Good discussion about the canal crossing. We followed up about the sports park just now. Implications to the adjacent Newbridge project, which has been a part of the discussions and will continue to be part of the analysis, as well as the names, Zinfandel versus Eagle Nest and the discussion you just had with Dean about using potentially non-standard curves. And then, we were suggesting a continuance date of July 26th at 2:00 PM. We're not entirely sure at this point if we can actually make that hearing date, so it may be that that's a placeholder, but at least by then, if we're not ready, we should be able to announce a more specific date at that point.
All right. That's helpful. And I would just add very briefly to that then, it would be intent that the stakeholder group would continue to meet.
Yes.
And that we would reach out as soon as the conclusion of this meeting to the Sports Village folks and try to get that lined up for a presentation and continue to work certainly on the other aspects that Todd, you know, very adequately covered in the report. So, okay, with those things noted, Madam Chair, I would move the staff recommendation, certainly receive and file, direct staff revise the environmental document, proceed with the consensus points, continue to work on the environmental document and continue to work on the items that Leanne outlined and any others that may come up in the process. And return to this board, hopefully July 26th at 2:00 PM.
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Okay, that concludes the item. Thank you, everyone. The board is still in session, so we please ask that you take any conversations out into the lobby. We do have an off-agenda speaker, L.R. Roberts.
Hi. This has been very pleasant after being at city council meetings where there's been a war.
That's what we heard.
The poor and the leaders of the city, it's been refreshing. So, we were very surprised this year to get our tax bill so late and then to find the payment date was very close to the day we got the bill. And so we came in in person to pay it and we're told that because it was so late, we'd have extra time to pay it. And we actually attempted to pay it in person, and the staff here is always wonderful. So we attempted to pay the tax bill and the two methods that we wanted to use to pay the tax bill, we could not use. So then we said, well, can we pay it online? We pay almost all our bills online. And we couldn't do that either. They weren't set up for it, which is amazing.
This is your property tax bill?
Yeah. Yeah, we were told we couldn't pay that online, which was amazing. So we mailed it, you know? And then it came, on the 10th of February, it came back. So I guess when it got there in the mail, it was a little bit late, so instead of doing anything else, they mailed it back. So, you know, it's a little annoying when it's late to begin with and then we just now got notice that you won't even cash the check, you know? So we tried really hard to pay this bill and now it's back. So there's something wrong with the process, so.
Okay. It's not a problem that we can solve for you up here today, but our county executive can, you speak with Ms. Roberts?
Absolutely, I'll get her information.
Okay.
What's the postmark, Linda? That's pretty critical. Is it postmarked the 10th of December?
Oh, you mean when?
Your postmark.
When you sent.
They sent it back to you, it shows it.
Let's see, when is it postmarked? 14th, so.
That's.
That's part of the file.
But we came in in person.
Yeah, I don't understand why the online would, fill pain wouldn't work.
No, I was told they weren't set up for that.
Well, but people do pay property taxes online, so.
Well, that's why.
Sorry. It's one of the things I was going to ask for, is maybe we could get, and it doesn't have to be an agendized item or anything, but maybe we can get a report back on payment methods for the variety of things that people pay here. I'll just throw out a personal example. If an employee wants to have an RT discounted pass, they have to actually go down every month downstairs, wait in line and fill out the paperwork and pay by, let's see, they don't take cash and they don't take ATM cards.
That's right. They wouldn't take cash.
Or debit cards.
They wouldn't take cash and they wouldn't take ATMs.
Right.
Wouldn't take cash for your tip.
No, won't even take cash, so they only take a check, which a lot of people don't even have checks anymore. So there may be a need for some updating our actual services.
Well, cash is legal tender, I don't see how. I don't see how we can say we can't take cash. I mean, I'd be, you know, a little mystified if that would hold up the county council's.
I'll get my information, too.
Okay.
Yeah, that was my reaction, too. What, I can't pay that way? What, I can't pay that way either?
We now have county executive comments.
None today.
None today. Supervisor comments, reports, and announcements. I know we have one from Mr. Serna.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If the folks in the back, and I think they're doing it right now, bring up this information. This is about an event that I'm part of. This is now the third annual gig that my band unsupervised is going to be playing on Thursday, March 24th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Fats Catering and Banquet Facility located in Old Sacramento. And this is the result of three years ago, committing myself to match what all of our great employees in Department of Health and Human Services and Department of Human Assistance do and have done for years now, which is raise money for a scholarship program for our local college-bound youth. And so certainly want to make mention of that, and certainly extend the invitation to all of my colleagues, staff, anyone viewing. All the information is there. You can contact my office, and if you need further information. But I wanted to make public mention of that, and again, extend that invitation. Thank you.
Anything else from anyone? Then we stand adjourned.